Nineteen, will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under power, indivisible, and every being just one.
Good morning. I believe before we have citizen input that our attorney, Mr. Dola, wanted to say something.
Yes, Commissioner, I've spoken with Mr. Anderson and Mr. LeLac's staff is recommending that the board pull item number three from the action item agenda and that that be addressed at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
It would be changing the agenda.
Yes.
So, yeah, just with new information, there's a discussion to be had, so I do support that. So I'll move removing item number three from the agenda.
And I'll second that motion. Any other further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair, yes. So item number three has been pulled today.
And I do support having a discussion today on the subject, so maybe an executive session item that we'll have to compare no time or something.
Okay, executive session. So then with the consent agenda.
So, yeah, there's one item on the consent agenda and I'll move approval.
And I'll second that. Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair? Yes. I do want to acknowledge that we do have three citizens that will be serving on our Public Health Advisory Group. It's it's an enormous responsibility and I want to thank Dr. Robert Ross, Sherri T. Ludwig from Redmond, and Rebecca Berry from the Central Oregon Health Council for serving. Their work is appreciated, so thank you. We need to now reconvene as the governing body for Black Butte Ranch County Service District Budget. This, the item was for number three. Well, he's for number. He was wanting to speak in reference to item number three. Ms. Dennis Polish?
Right, the board's pulled item number three, so they're not going to be dealing with that issue today. So I think that probably moots the need to provide any citizen input. And typically citizen input is for items that are not on the board's agenda, so probably wouldn't have been appropriate to have citizen input on that. We are going to reconvene at the staff level and speak with the board on that issue. As you folks are aware, there was some very recent correspondence that came in and staff wants some time to study some of that and be able to speak to the board about that. So number three, which is the PRC Amendments and Partnership Agreement, has been pulled for today.
Thank you. I just, the comment section actually addresses agenda items. So when you have citizen input and you have a questionnaire that has board items right on the question, agenda items right on the question, I would think a citizen could discuss an agenda.
Yeah, that's a good catch in it. I don't know if that's a recent change in it. Typically, citizen input is for items that are not otherwise on the agenda. And if they're on the agenda, then they're typically brought up in the context of the agendized items. So I apologize for that confusion. We'll fix that.
Thank you, Dennis. And we do have your letter, so thank you very much. Okay, reconvening as the board, we have consideration of the board's signature of a letter reappointing Rick Hartnack to the Black Butte Ranch County Service District Budget Committee.
So this is the Public Safety Agency of Black Butte Ranch, the committee that manages that district and we are the governing body. So with that, I'll move board's signature of letter reappointing Rick Hartnack to the Black Butte Ranch County Service District.
And I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
No.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair, yes. So we will now no longer convene as the Black Butte. And now we're going to reconvene as the role of Deschutes County. So our first item is the Wildfire Mitigation Advisory Committee. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, and I had these other ones.
Tony's here for this.
Yep.
Can I ask now? Okay.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Zachariah Hackes, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. This morning, I am here to present the applications that we received for the Wildfire Mitigation Advisory Committee. We had an application period for just under a month. The deadline closed on August 26th. A total of thirty-two applications were received and they cover all categories that that were discussed in order to represent different perspectives for this advisory committee. So we have several members from the fire service or first responder category, as well as home builders, realtors, at least one insurance representative, many homeowners or HOA representatives, and two planning commissioners. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about those applications, look to you for direction on next steps, on how to proceed with with appointing various members to this committee. The memo provided in your packet does provide a table addressing each, or sort of categorizes each of the, all of the applicants. I also want to note that and apologize that in the packet, the application packet I provided the board for the public, because there's there are applications with some personal information, I provided hard copies to the board and county administration. And in that packet, when I compiled all of the individual PDFs that were submitted, the the fillable form on Acrobat ended up copying over several of the applications. So it looks like in your packets, one individual applied four times. That's not accurate. And for the record, I did provide the Commissioners and administration with an updated version with with all thirty-two applicants. So I apologize and regret that error. The last thing I'll mention is the, we are planning a, to have a sort of a project management team that will be comprised of county staff as well as staff from the cities of Lepine and Sisters, because we manage their their building programs. We will guide, sort of help guide and decide how to best present this information and provide regular updates to the commission. That's a something, a new outcome that we've decided since we last talked. So with that, here to answer any questions or otherwise, look to the board for for the direction on how to appoint the committee members.
One thing I noticed, that Brian Braddock, who, Brian John Braddock, you have him down in the other category, but he actually was with Farmers Insurance for thirty-nine years. You know, they're a west coast firm. They they're now in Thousand Oaks, California, is where their center is. And they have, you know, his expertise from that company. I thought there's only one other person in the insurance, so I thought maybe he should go up in that category. I know we said we were only going to take one of those. But he had extensive experience and Farmers is a pretty amazing, as far as fire goes.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that note, Commissioner Adair. Mr. Braddock did check the box of the other category.
Did he?
And so that's why, you know, I was just looking black and white and put him in that box. But his his record does show that he has quite the extensive insurance background. So, yeah, arguably, he should be in the insurance representative category or considered for that as well.
It's hard to know.
The, and that also reminds me of, we did have two other applications that were submitted past the deadline from from various backgrounds. I think two, actually both of them were in the home builder construction background. They weren't provided in your applicant, application packet, because they're provided after the deadline. But if the board decides that you would like to see more more applicants, there has been a lot of interest in this committee and we can provide those as well, if needed.
I know. It's phenomenal, the people that have applied and their expertise, a cross-section of, you know, fire, insurance, builders, homeowners, HOAs, you know, just what we were hoping for in order to get ahead of the situation.
Absolutely.
So could we take a moment and, you know, the the goals are wildfire hazard zone, a map in Deschutes County, building code standards and regulations to mitigate wildfires. Can you kind of remind me the the sideboards on that, as in this committee could come up with all kinds of ideas? What, yeah, what's what are we going in with for a committee like this? And and maybe it's to be determined, but, yeah, let's have that discussion for a little bit.
Absolutely. So I'll I'll start and Nick can add in as necessary. The the planning staff or community development staff had met with the board for several months discussing a recent amendment, potential option for amendment to the building code called R three twenty-seven point four. And that captures additional standards that Deschutes County could incorporate into the building code when reviewing new dwellings.
So, yeah, with that standard, it's kind of a yes or no question at that point. It's optional to adopt. And if we do adopt it, it's in its entirety or not.
Exactly.
So, yeah, that's kind of the level I'm just trying to get clarity on.
Yep.
So that's a yes or no question for code, building code standards.
Yep. And then we're also looking for the Wildfire Mitigation Advisory Committee to consider a two thousand and fifteen audit by the University of Oregon's Community Service Team that looked at our natural hazard, our code based on natural hazards, and recommended several additional policies that could be incorporated to reduce potential losses in the county based on land use standards.
Land use, yep.
And those would cover defensible space, primarily driveway access, et cetera. And so that's, whereas the building code standards are very prescriptive, they're written in state law. The land use standards are are not, and they they are much more nebulous, if you will, in terms of what the committee could recommend to the board finally.
And we have examples of the West Side transect and the Miller Tree Farm. Those would be kind of the examples that we put in code for specific developments. So then the question there is, are these for existing parcels that have not been developed on or future parcels?
That's a good question, something we'd probably look for the committee to.
Yep, okay, for clarity, okay. And then the the wildfire hazard zone map itself, previously, basically, Deschutes County was at one, one number, one designation, and now this committee would be charged with come up with a recommendation for the map if there was different zone designations.
Correct. Yeah, so the the map itself, the wildfire hazard zone that speaks to R three twenty-seven is informed by the wildfire hazard zone.
And R three twenty-seven is a building code standard we're talking about, yes or no? So those two go together. Just trying to make sure I'm real clear on what.
Commissioner, for the record, Nick LeLac, Deschutes County Community Development Director. I do think it's important that we just put on the record that the zone, the hazard zone map, will be based on the Oregon Department of Forestry's four criteria outlined in state law. And that's going to be critical. And and there could be variations of how that's applied in the county at the regional scale, the landscape scale. But we plan to draft a charter for this group and we'll share it with the board, of course, first, that everybody agrees that this, these are the standards we're going to use, we're going to use to develop the map. So it's not going to be, while there are many other great ideas and whatnot that maybe should influence the map, this is going to be based strictly on the law. And if if committee members are not in agreement, then it may be best for them not to participate in in the process, because we need to keep this really confined to what is in state law.
That's my thought process, exactly. So a charter of the committee would be done with the committee's input? And is that it? Kind of a consensus of the group or?
I think this will be.
See, there's kind of a catch twenty.
I would I would suggest that that staff draft the charter, have the board approve it, and then we present it to the committee. If this were going to be a a year or two-year-long process, then maybe there could be more input, like we've had with, like, for example, the Sisters Implementation Committee. It's where it's really an informative stage and going, this is a really defined project. And I suggest that that we work with the board so that we clearly establish the expectations for the committee so that they can make informed decisions if they're going to.
And that's kind of my thought process, because this could go in a lot of different ways.
And it is fascinating what happens with the numbers. And, you know, just by your presentation, what a month or two ago, you can see, you know, if you mingle the number, or, you know, you co-mingle them, and then you're going to get a seven or you're going to get a six point five, when it really, it's only a six point four and that, you know, that six point four is going to be critical for insurance factors and things. So, yeah, you have to follow the law precisely, I believe. So, yeah, it's going to be a huge job.
So it's great that we've seen so many applicants, people involved, willing to, you know, put time in on this topic. As I say, we just spoke a little bit about what the scope and the expectation might be. I do support the fact that, yeah, let's let's define a charter of the decision points upfront, so we can get to that. We have looked at the map in versions of how, you know, how would it calculate out referring to these criterious defined, Department of Forestry is the criteria? Yeah, so, you know, we've looked at versions of the map and it gets interesting pretty quick.
But someone, actually, Nick was commenting the other day, weren't they, that they were saying that that doesn't take into account structures and what structures can do in fires? Was that?
That was in the newspaper, Structures as Fuel.
Yeah. Well, I heard somebody say that and I was just thinking like, yeah, they they can really contribute to a fire, so.
Right. It's certainly a valid point. It's just that the Oregon Department of Forestry's standards are.
Doesn't include them.
Climate and.
Slope? Did you say slope?
Slopes, vegetation, climate, and there was one other factor. There's four.
What is it?
Ed will provide.
I knew there was going to be some way we could get it up here.
Okay.
Good morning. For the record, Ed Keith, County Forester. So, yeah, the four factors are are weather, which is one one score for the whole county, topography, there are certain slope breaks. And then there's two vegetation factors, actually. One is the fuel type and one is the fuel continuity. So, you know, you could have a volatile fuel type, but if it's broken up, you know, and it only covers fifteen percent of the landscape, it's a much lower score than if it's a hundred percent continuous across that landscape with the given fuel type, so.
So we're here to to kind of whittle down thirty-two applicants to a group of seven to twelve. So, and I hadn't really prepared a matrix to offer right now, but, I mean, at this point, it is all laid out. I would like to, you know, possibly postpone this, a subset of, you know, selections.
Right.
And, but we can get to it now that we've really had this discussion. You know, I just asked my questions that we want to do and we're doing this in the public meeting, so.
And can you work on the charter then?
We can. That's a great idea.
You know, work on the charter now, because you could ask someone and show them the charter that we've approved. And if they don't feel comfortable with it, then, you know, we, with thirty-two applicants, we definitely, and we need twelve positions at the maximum, so.
Well, it's kind of up to us, but, yeah, yep.
We didn't, we didn't expect to have thirty outstanding applicants.
I know.
There are so many very, it's certainly a tough decision for the board. But what we can do is we can prepare the charter and then schedule a follow-up meeting with the board. We have a commissioner out this week and maybe a commissioner out next week, so maybe we'll be looking for a couple of weeks out. That gives us the time to draft the charter and for the Commissioners to begin to think about the applicants, if that is.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
That's a good timeframe that works for.
And you said there was two applicants that had completed application after a deadline? I'd be interested in seeing those names or, you know, including them. I don't know, you know, this is our process, so. Do you support that?
No.
Oh, well, I was just throwing it out.
We have thirty-two fabulous people and they followed the rules. They got it here timely, so, you know.
So let's not do that. Well, that good.
But, you know, if we need them, if, you know, if someone can't serve, then we can always go to them and pick them up at that time.
There you go.
I guess it's one and one, right, today?
Oh, yeah, that's fine, yep.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for being prepared and we will never forget those four things now. What we add. Okay, so now, hmm. Tim, continue discussion.
Good morning. For the record, Tim Shimke, Director of the Department of Solid Waste. I'm here today to continue our discussion on the solid waste management plan and and hear any questions or concerns that the board has on the plan before we move towards formal adoption. I'm not sure what kind of questions you might have in the general document. Certainly, the question of privatization is out there. Tony mentioned just this morning that he kind of likes the idea of a position paper that would be an appendix to the plan, which basically would say, the question of privatization has been raised. Here's where we embrace the private sector currently in the system. And and basically a commitment to consider the private sector at the appropriate points during the implementation of the plan. So, for example, I think the first, one of the first things that will come at us is the plan recommends that we target construction and demolition waste to try and get more recovery. An approach to that would be a fairly substantial, probably seven hundred thousand to a million dollar investment into equipment, sort line, screens, et cetera. I think before we make that decision, we have that discussion about who's the appropriate party to own and operate. Maybe maybe we own and private sector operates, maybe private sector does both, maybe we do both. But I see that with C and D recycling, I see that with the operation of the new transfer station in Redmond after it gets built. That operations look quite a bit different. How much should be considered the private sector in that operation? And then, of course, siding in the landfill, you know, whether it's the the siding process, the the permitting, the construction and operation, all those are factors that could be considered to be provided by the private sector.
So, yeah, just like I said, an addendum, maybe one or two pages, maybe just a few paragraphs. A lot of the information you just provided is kind of implied in this solid waste plan. But as I say, we've heard a few times, Budget Committee and a SWAC member at a previous meeting saying, well, what about privatization? And it really, it's it's a specific question. This is a point in time. It's a once in a generation. And I do like the idea of just documenting what the the frame of mind is while we adopt this document in its entirety. We've got a great history in Deschutes County, solid waste, cost-effective franchise relationships with private industry. You know, so it's really kind of the state, maybe it's a state of the industry and relationships is is part of this, you know, addendum also. You know, the history of, another item that came up is the history, you know, we didn't have a solid waste advisory committee for many years and, you know, there was a contentious time where this discussion was happening in the past. So that may be just a few words also in there, because then it puts the whole thing in context. You know, a twenty-year context is what I'm referring to, but this is that point in time, as I mentioned, that if that question's been asked, you know, how we're answering that question. So that really kind of puts it out there, the words on paper, people can buy into it. And we have something, because the other concept is, you know, the siding process. And there's words in here talking about the state legislator legislature being supportive of, you know, future activities where this needs to happen, long history in the state of Oregon of, you know, contentious land use or whatever, you know, the terminology might be on that. So those are the concepts that I can see in it, in a, just an addendum or a piece of paper.
We could, we could actually write a recommendation in the administrative chapter, chapter eight. So you could write it in there as a as a recommendation, you know, here's the points and we'll consider privatization. Or you could, as suggested, it could just be a one or two-page position paper that's an appendix, which kind of lays out that we have looked at privatization and we will be considering it in the future.
Yeah, and we do have a great history of it, as I say. I mean, that's, it's also the lay of the land, as it is now. You know, this document talks about the system as it is and where we want to go with it, but there's just another little aspect of the point in time that we're at right now, because moving the landfill, because we had the the rural, smaller regional landfills and they've all consolidated. So it's just that bigger picture. Any thoughts, Commissioner?
Yes, I was just thinking about the fact that you do run a superb program. And I just feel like we do have to look at privatization on some scale, but I know that siding is really important and the fact that Deschutes County residents came through and said they wanted to keep it here. It's, I think it's got to be really impactful that, you know, Portland sends all of their waste over to Gallium County. But people here feel like we need to be responsible and, you know, how we do that and how we cite the plan and and, you know, how quickly we can get that land into the process of approval. So, no, but I do think private, we do need to look at privatization on some level, just to see, would it make sense? Are they really running it better than we would, you know, the part of the business that you run? When you were just talking about Redmond a minute ago, were you talking about doing, like, recycling at the Redmond location?
The the current transfer station does have facilities for people to drop their recyclables.
Right.
We don't, we don't have a compost operation there. As we move to the new facility, we will get land use approval for a compost operation as well as the transfer station. And the recycling facility associated with the new transfer station may be a little bit more extensive than what it is today. I mean, I suspect that the new transfer station up there will look a lot like not landfill with that recycling and that organics. with that recycling and that organics operation there at Knott kind of being repeated over there at Nigus.
So, then you're saying that we wouldn't have to move it to Knott or the next location? They could actually do the work there, which would make sense.
Yes, as far as the compost operation goes, yes.
Right, the compost operation, yes.
We considered, we considered relocating the main compost operation away from its current location. But then, when you, when you look at, that'll still be the receiving station for all that feedstock that comes in. And then, if you look at the cost of, of grinding it and transporting it to a more rural compost site, it's very, very expensive. We can, we can invest in considerable infrastructure to make the facility at Knott work well, even though it has closer neighbors. So, that's the direction, I think, that we're going. Now, when we, we'll kind of repeat that. I don't know how quickly we'll actually be composting in Redmond. But certainly, when we look at, at our costs for dealing with organics, when we're talking about the yard debris that people bring, as well as the fire-free load that comes in every year, that, that cost of grinding and transporting from Nigus to Knott is very, very substantial. So, that's kind of what's driving us to say, maybe we should consider composting at Nigus itself, creating a finished product and selling that product there instead of moving it all here. Again, I'm not exactly sure how quickly we'll, we'll get to that point. We'll certainly get land use approval for it as part of the construction process, but actual implementation is yet to, yet to be determined.
Well, it makes sense. I was looking at for a year on Saturday when I was there, and, you know, there wasn't that much of landscaping waste, you know, there. I don't know how often you have to clean that up and haul it, but, you know, it wasn't, there wasn't really that much. But you think of the combustibility of it, you know, if someone threw a cigarette out the door, or at the window, yeah, it could be a problem.
So, we usually go out there and grind, and clean it out just before fire-free, because we know there's going to be a big slug. And then, usually, right after fire-free, we'll clean it out again, and that's usually all we do. Then, then it just builds up over the course of a year, until the next spring, when we do this, we repeat the process. So, the volume there is pretty small, and there's no need to do, to do it more often, I guess.
The half-day for the fire-free in the fall, is that the last weekend of October? Just, you know, the half-day free?
So, it's, it's actually a half-price.
Half-price.
At Knott landfill only.
Only, oh, I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, we haven't, we haven't done that in the, I don't believe, at the transfer stations at all. It's just the, once in the spring free.
Right.
For a weekend, two days. But then, in the fall, it's just Deschutes Recycling offering half, half-price disposal.
Okay, all right. Because I wasn't aware of it, so now I know why I wasn't aware of it. It wasn't in my neighborhood.
It wasn't happening here in the neighborhood.
Yes, it's not in my neighborhood, so, okay.
You know, adding that, you know, but...
And here, I wanted, I just thought it would be, you know, what is our cost of that? And could we add it totally free in the fall, but we don't even have it at the other places? So, okay. How impactful is that, half, half-price weekend?
It's, it's popular here. You know, one of, one of the reasons why we don't do a free event in the fall is the fear that people will, will hoard through the, the fire danger season, you know, waiting for that fall-free event. So, we wanted to avoid that. Now, we, we're probably doing that to a certain extent when we offer half-price pay. You know, people are probably going to save it up to a certain extent, but we don't think it would be near as, as extensive as if we said we're going to have a free event in the fall, then we wouldn't see anything coming in during the summer, and be stacking up out there.
The unintended consequences, yes.
That's right.
Thank you.
Well, so, the bigger picture of the solid waste management plan draft document for near-term approval. The recommendations, the schedule, it does hang together well. I mean, this is a wonderful product, and I don't know if we've had this discussion. I have read it in more detail now. You know, having a solid waste advisory committee, and active staff and leadership in the department empowers me to, to, you know, lean towards the fact that this is, is getting close to being able to be adopted, and then we can move forward. So, as I say, there's no recommendations or, or words that I would propose really changing in the document itself, other than adding some information.
Okay.
I know, I agree, the add would be important, if we could do that. And I think the fact that if we can, as a county, let people know that twenty-five, twenty-five point two percent of waste is from food, so that people really are consciously trying to do a better job, not throwing away so much food. It's, and it's enormous.
It is.
Yes.
Great. Hopefully, that sets direction and kind of get in closure here.
So, we're almost there.
Almost there. Not ready to set a date for adoption.
Well, yeah, not right now, but we'll...
We need to get filled, weigh in here before we get to that point, okay?
If, yes. Maybe like on the eighteenth, if you have that, September eighteenth, in two weeks.
Okay, I'll, well, we'll, we'll get the document drafted, you know? And I'm, I'm going to approach it from a, it's going to be an appendix, as opposed to integrate it into the plan. We'll run it by you guys for your approval, and that'll be done certainly prior to the eighteenth. So, you'll have a totally complete document to consider adopting, if, if indeed the eighteenth works for everybody.
Yeah.
Great.
I like that as a proposed date, and we'll go from there.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Shumpke.
Thank you, I'm excited.
I thought you liked coming to our meeting.
Yeah, every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for a few weeks, yeah.
I can stop by every Wednesday if you'd like, just to say hi.
Oh, of course you can. It's only, what is it, twenty minutes out there, twenty-five?
Not even.
It's not that, oh. Fifteen, you can go that fast, okay. All right, great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I see we have, you know, Project Wildfire and folks here, but just some statements. So, you know, we did have our meeting la, was it Monday this, or yesterday? Was it yesterday?
It was yesterday.
Yeah, oh, boy. But, you know, setting direction to Project Wildfire. You know, the, the path is open, let's figure out what we're going to do. Let's, you know, add resources is the, is kind of the concept. Let's take it to the next level of whatever that is. So, you know, and Ed may have talked to you about this. I'm speaking to Jody specifically, as Project Wildfire contractor. Yeah, let's figure out a proposal for, you know, taking it to the next level a little bit. You know, if there was money to be spent, what would we do? Inviting the neighborhood associations and, you know, residents of the area to really get up to speed, and maybe provide resources for neighborhood activities also. So, very positive.
Yes, and I've been working with some people out in the Cloverdale area that are really concerned about doing more cleanup. So, it seems that people are very aware of the opportunity they have to make a difference. And I'm working on my second thousand cards, so.
There was a chipper and a chainsaw going at seven-thirty near my neighborhood this morning, so somebody's just doing something pretty big today.
Somebody is working hard.
Yeah, yeah.
So, thank you. All right, so, is there anything else on our agenda now? We're going upstairs?
So, recess for follow-up?
We don't necessarily have to today.
Okay.
If the board wants to, we can certainly recess upstairs for an executive session. We're in a state litigation. Something you want to do in light of the today's debate.
Yeah, I'm available for that.
I would like to hear. I know that Commissioner Henderson will definitely want to hear, but I would like to hear today, just, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so.
Sure. So, we're in, we're now adjourning from our meeting here, and we will be going upstairs for executive session.